Signing and zoning commission for today, Wednesday, November 18th. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Done that, done that. Please, the record will show that all seven commissioners are present. And I would like a motion to approve the revised minutes of the planning and zoning commission. And all the commissioners should have gotten a copy of the revised minutes that were... There were some statements that were not covered at the minutes. And then when they viewed the tape, they decided that they would have revised minutes. So could I have a motion, please?
I'll move that we approve the revised minutes.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano, second from the vice chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, 7-0. Public comments, if anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight, please fill out the card. And this is the time for you to come up and address the commission. If there is nobody, we will move on to the next order of business, which is the disclosure of ex parte communications. Any ex parte communications on this side?
No.
Any on this side? Chair has none. There are no ex parte communications. All right, next order of business is the 2010 census. Wow, I worked on the 2000 census. And Katie Wilkin will be our presenter.
Thank you Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission. I heard you all saw your bags we left on your chairs. And basically, I just wanted to take a few moments and let you know what's going on with the efforts of the 2010 census. Staff has been working on preparing for the 2010 census for about a year and a half now. So this is my first time working with a census. I didn't know how involved it got, but it's really, really important. And I wanted to share a few facts about the US census. One of the main reasons why we're contacting you now about the census, even though it's over four months away. In 2000, the national initial response rate for the census was 67%. And for every 1%, we can increase that response rate, it saves the US government $85 to $90 million. So if we could get that initial response rate up to around 78%, it would save $1 billion for the federal government. And obviously, especially with our national deficit climbing, that's really important right now. So we want to take the time right now to get the word out about the census and encourage people to participate. And just of note, the Goodyear's 2000 census initial response rate was 68%. So that's kind of our baseline that we want to build off of and get a better response rate with the 2010 census. Obviously, we know that the main reason for the census is for districting. And it's really important for Arizona this year. We hear rumors that we're going to be getting another representative with the 2010 census. But it also means a lot of money to the community. MAG recently put out some numbers that they estimate that almost $4,000 per household that's counted is what the city receives in benefits. And that works out to a little over $1,500 per person. So when they say everybody counts, everybody really does count. And that's per year. So over a 10-year period, one person counts as about $15,000 to the city in revenue. Beyond that, $300 billion is distributed each year in grant funds using census information. So it's so important for us to have the right information. And especially this census, since we're going to be reaching over the 50,000 mark, which is an important milestone for certain grants, including CDBG and home getting to HUD entitlement. The 2000 census stated Goodyear's population at 18,911, and we estimate that it's well over 60,000 now. So our population has more than tripled since 2000. So we're going to be seeing a lot of changes in the demographics and information we get back from the 2010 census. And to tell you a little bit about the census, there are no more long forms. You might remember those from the 2000 census. In your packets I gave you, I gave you a sample census brochure. And everyone gets 10 questions. It should take about 10 to 15 minutes to fill out. It's going to be really quick and easy for everyone. The long form was replaced by the American Community Survey, which is an ongoing survey so that cities and other organizations can get up-to-date information all the time. And I also gave you all a bunch of brochures. And the reason I gave you a bunch of brochures is I just wanted to ask for your help in spreading the word. You know, I don't expect you guys to go door-to-door handing out brochures or anything. But if you're going to any public events, if you work with any businesses that are willing to put brochures out, you know, I know there's a couple Pebble Creek residents maybe going to the residents association and just asking them to put them on a counter somewhere, just to help us get the word out. And if you are going to any public meetings or HOA-type meetings, would like more brochures or like some more information to take with you to share information about the census, please contact me. And staff would be happy to help you out with that. We just want to do whatever we can to get the word out about the census. So that's all I have to say about that. And if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Questions of staff?
Questions of staff?
I would like to make a general comment.
Yes.
As a former census worker, it was an experience that I do not plan on doing again as a result of that experience, but it is a good experience to have. But I am so happy that the long form went away because that was a true source of irritation to a lot of people who felt you were being... The government was being very, very intrusive in trying to figure out what was going on. So with that note, I will close this hearing. Thank you very much, Katie. And now I will open the public hearing on case 07200016, the Madera rezone. And Mr. Crecchia will be making the presentation for us.
Mr. Chairman, I need to declare a conflict of interest again.
Please have a seat in the audience and share with us your expertise on this event, if you care to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a PAD for Madera. I know the commission is very familiar with this item, so I'll be brief in just going over the generalities of the PAD. Here's our location. We're about four miles south of where Australia currently ends right now. And this is Madera right here in relation to some of the proposed developments we have in this area of the city. The big one is Australia Region 3 right here that kind of wraps around Madera. Madera was annexed, well, the parts that were not already in the city, was annexed in 2007. And it was given zoning of agricultural urban and agricultural. And this is an aerial photo of what's going on on a property right now. As you can see, it's mostly agricultural, a lot of undeveloped property here to the south. This right here is Waterman Wash that forms the eastern boundary of the project, Hunt Road, Riggs Road, and then Chandler Heights here is the northern boundary. And this right here is a dairy that will be closing once development proceeds with the project. This is the PAD development plan. We have a commercial core planned here at Riggs and Madera Boulevard. Surrounding that, you have residential densities that get lower as you head away from the core. Three school sites here, three elementary school sites. Discussions with the high school district indicated they did not need a high school site here, but we do have the proposed three elementary school sites. With these land uses and such, this is a breakdown that is in the staff report. You have everything from estate lots all the way down to apartments, commercial, the public uses, the schools. And then with open space, we're looking at about 356 acres. And that does include the area proposed within Waterman Wash and Madera Wash. Commercial core is about 58 acres. And then this again here, this is Madera Wash, Waterman Wash. The linear park is along Waterman Wash and then kind of wraps around this loop collector and within Madera. As staff has looked at this, we do find it is in conformance with our general plan. General plan amendment, the major amendment was approved back in February '07. The commission did approve the minor amendment. That was in March 2009. Did recommend approval of that, and that's still is waiting to go to the city council. So we do find it in conformance with our general plan. We do find it compatible with the development existing and planned within the area. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the STIPS in the staff report and along with the four revised STIPS that was provided with you in the memo tonight. Four small changes, mostly for clarification purposes. Staff didn't see a significant issue with these four changes. So with that, Mr. Chairman, my presentation is concluded. I know the applicant has a presentation that they'd like to present to you.
Okay. Don't go away. Questions of staff?
No.
Questions of Mr. Williams and then Mr. Chair.
You know, I'm sorry, Steve. I know this was answered before, but again, what is this little square on the south side of Riggs Road that's not a part of the development? What is there?
I think that is a substation, APS substation.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Steve, could you put the first overhead that you had? Nope, the next one, the next one, that one. Waterman Wash is basically running through there. And then the parcel that is between Australia 3 and the Madera is part of the... Is a McCray Holdings, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And Waterman Wash goes through that?
This parcel right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So any channelization, et cetera, is going to have to be worked out with Newland, Madera, McCray Holdings, and people upstream, which is really Australia, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I understand it's going to likely be a group effort.
Okay. All right. Next question, thank you. Next question, could you, on stipulation 27, which talks about the final PAD zoning and incorrect references, could you elaborate on that out of the presentation that the applicant has made?
There is, Mr. Chairman, there is a section in this PAD book, and that's what the STIP is referencing, all those materials related to the Waterman Wash and the joint effort that's proposed. Staff just felt it better to remove any reference to a city participation, maybe to remove that, any sort of perception.
Okay. So in essence, what this, what the group effort is, it talks about is Australia, McCray Holdings, and Madera would be working on it. And the city is not financially responsible other than giving, you know, appropriate guidance as far as the land use goes.
Yes, sir.
And the Corps of Engineers will give it their 404 guidance, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff? Okay, Mr. Jones, would you like to come up and make a brief presentation?
Brief.
That's not you. Well, you know, Dustin, we've seen this God knows how many times.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with that, if you'd like to just pepper us with questions, we can go with staff's presentation?
Would...
Or if you'd like me to elaborate some more. I know we've gone a couple times. We were here before you last December, and we figured it would take you 11 months to get through the entire packet. So we were coming back tonight to see if you have any questions, I guess.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to, we're going to go with the question route. Unless somebody wants a brief...
We do have a full presentation.
Unless somebody wants a brief presentation, I mean, we have seen this several times.
Yeah, but I'd like a 30-second overview.
Okay. You have a two-minute, you get three minutes.
Impossible.
Okay, give me the three minute, give me the five-minute or less overview for the people who are watching at home. But move it along, Dustin, please.
Let me give you some of the, where we're at in terms of what we have accomplished over the past couple of years, Commissioner Williams. We have, as you, as staff has elaborated, we have been working on this for over two years at the staff level through general plan amendments, working on the land use plan. These are all the dates of the different things that have been approved by both the commission and council to date. Last year, we came before you all in December with the PAD presentation. After presenting that PAD presentation to you all, there were a number of issues that were outstanding that needed to be addressed, some of those dealing with some of the questions that Chairman Gelsner has raised tonight. As a result of that, there was a work session held at the city council level where all of the developers in this general region were brought in. And the council had a work session to address the concerns with developing at this portion, at this southern portion of the city. Madera just being one of the developments that was proposed for that area. There were a whole host of issues having to do with water, wastewater, public safety, circulation, other circulation issues that needed to be addressed. Over the course of the past 11 months, those issues have been resolved through a development agreement that would go with the city council. It's not before you this evening, but that development agreement, the crux of that agreement has been reviewed multiple times over this past year. And then last Monday night, there was a final work session that was held to go through all those issues that dealt with the very, the details, the mechanics, the financing of the development. So you have seen, as the planning commission, the development itself in terms of the number of homes that are proposed, the densities, the other types of planning issues, the development agreement, financing issues that Chairman Gelsner was getting to you in terms of the cooperation with multiple parties, has been worked out through that agreement. So that's where we are at in terms of the big, larger, global issues that have been raised. I don't know that I can add much more to staff's presentation in terms of the densities, the land uses, the circulation. Most of the issues had to deal with more of the more finite details with respect to the development. Were there any specific questions that you would have, Mr. Chairman, or Commissioner Williams?
No, no, thank you, Dustin. And I will say thank you very much for kind of, for all your hard work over the several months that you and the staff have been working to put this together. You know, I think it's a great plan, and I wish you well. And I just, you know, I'm sorry, but it is a public hearing, and it's a requirement, and I just don't think it should be taken lightly.
I'm not, I don't disagree. Dustin, could you, I would ask you to elaborate on one issue. In the Madera plan, there are 2,000 of the homes are going to be in a gated, I'm not sure gated, but a senior community. Could you elaborate a little bit on that issue and how that is going to be handled in different home styles that are going to be in that area, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, at this time, what we have designated as our first phase, if you look on our plan there, it's outlined with the red box. The westernmost portion of that, we've discussed and contemplated that could have an active adult component. The idea being, this large 2,400-acre master plan community, to have the mixes of ages, the age-restricted, and families in the same master plan community would work, much like Palm Valley was contemplated when it was originally planned. Pebble Creek used to be part of the Palm Valley master plan, and it's still part of that. So what we have in our plan is on the westernmost portion of the site, we have that area that could be an active adult component. It's the concept right now, there haven't been any CCNRs or anything that has been drawn up to restrict it as of yet. But in the land planning, that was the portion of our first phase that could contemplate that. The idea being typically in most markets, the active adult are a little more recession-proof. And so those markets, as you may have read in the paper, those developments are continuing to be developed in the current market. And so as part of our plan, we've designated that area that could be active adult or age-restricted.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you for your brevity, and thank you for your conciseness, and thank you for keeping us up to speed, Dustin.
Okay.
All right. Now it is time for public comments. I have one person who would like to speak, Mr. Matlin. Mr. Matlin, before you start your presentation, I do want to advise you that the planning commission works on land use and zoning issues and does not deal with the development issue. If you would like to make a comment on the development issue, we will entertain it, but we, that is not our action, that is the city council's action. Podium's yours, sir.
Okay, then, first Roger Matlin, Goodyear, Arizona. And first, what is the difference between the two definitions that you just gave? So I can make sure I understand where I stand.
The land use is the land, is how the land will be utilized and the proposed uses of the land, along with the adjacent land uses and whether it fits in the community or not, versus the economic development agreement, which is a marketing issue and is also a city council issue because that deals in finance. So if you want to, you can make a comment on whatever you want, but I'm, what I'm saying to you is that the planning commission will only look at the land use and whether the land use is appropriate for this piece of land based on what's adjacent to it and how it fits into the overall community.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that definition. My primary concern is it really has to do with actually Luke Air Force Base and the designation for the F-35 fighter jet. And that is because there is a study that was recently completed out of Maryland where they are looking into the future of the F-35, which obviously we're looking at out here. And residential is a very big factor in that. I want to know, has there been a study, any kind of research, or any kind of agreement with like the Department of Defense or Luke Air Force Base itself, that a development of this type of density in this many homes in the flight path is going to be acceptable or that is going to be an issue? Because obviously, Luke Air Force Base is a very significant economic factor to the city of Goodyear. And obviously, as well from a safety standpoint, obviously, we don't want anything to happen in a nice residential community. So that is the primary concern. I know this, this study recently came out, out of Maryland, since they don't have the exact noise and flight patterns designated for the F-35, but they are significantly larger than the 16. It's going to be more area that they're going to be flying over, and obviously, that could be a concern. So...
Okay. I'm going to let staff address that, but I also would like to give you this page out of our presentation, and it has a, it has a mention to, you know, Luke Air Force Base and how this project affects it. And this is for your edification. And we'll let staff come up and address that issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to repeat what's in the staff report, you know, for the public, this project, Rainbow Valley area, is not within the Luke Air Force Base vicinity box, as we call it, where we have, I was concerned regards to noise and encroachment, this is far removed from that. This area is, on the general plan, identified as the entire Australia area and Rainbow Valley as a departure corridor at times for Luke Air Force Base. For that reason, there is included a stipulation that all future subdivision plots contain the standard note, providing notice to the public that this subdivision or this development can potentially impacted by noise as a result of our operations at Luke Air Force Base and Goodyear Airport as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Does that satisfy you, Mr. Matlin?
Not entirely, because as a resident of Australia Mountain, we weren't all given the heads-up on Luke Air Force Base, which we've grown to enjoy and love. But clearly, the concern here is just that the F-35 is significantly, it has a larger, as you put it, I'm not sure what the term was, but the box for the F-35 is significantly larger than the 16. And that's the purpose of this study that just came out.
Okay.
So just a concern so that people don't get down the line and then we start having problems. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for a motion. Joe, do we do, do we do comments first or a motion first?
You can do it either way.
Okay, we'll take comments, we'll take comments. Comments? Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Loretano?
I just think it's a beautiful project.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair?
Look forward to continuing into another... No.
Commissioner Williams, are all your questions answered? Do you feel like we've covered?
Yes, thank you very much.
Do you feel like we've covered this for the public?
I think Mr. Jones has done another outstanding job.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve this item on our agenda, please?
Commissioner Gelsner, I make a motion, we approve case number 07200016, request to rezone 2,363 acres from the agricultural and agricultural urban zoning districts to the final planned area development zoning district to facilitate the development of mixed-use project known as Madera.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second...
I will second.
From Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Okay. Congratulations, Dustin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commission...
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing for case 093500-0003, Palm Valley Church Special Use Zoning Permit. And Mr. Burningham is going to make the presentation.
Thank you Chairman Gelsner, members of the planning commission, and members of the public. I have, over Elmo, I have an aerial photo exhibit. What we have before you this evening is a special use application for the Palm Valley Church. The Palm Valley Church is proposing to occupy the building that was previously owned by the Terry's Consign and Design, which is 431 North Litchfield Road. It's in the Palm Valley Crossing Commercial Center, which as you can see here, it's generally located at the southeast corner of Litchfield Road and Auto Drive. And this area is zone PAD and is subject to the general commercial C2 zoning district. The zoning ordinance provides that a church may be established in the C2 zoning district subject to the approval of a special use. And the subject property that you see before you is about 4.7 acres, and the existing building is about 46,000 square feet. And I know that many of you are familiar with the area. There is vehicular access for the church provided at two locations, existing driveways from Litchfield Road. And you can see that there are three existing driveways from Auto Drive. Okay, now just moving to the site plan. So the subject property would be right here. The, I just wanted you to be able to look at the site plan while I talk a little bit more about the, what the church is proposing on the building footprint. The interior of the church will have a main worship area that will be about 9,000 square feet. And the remaining area will be comprised of children's meeting rooms, classrooms. They have a proposed cafe-style meeting area. There would be some admini- There would be some administrative offices for the church, and, and also the typical hallways, restrooms, and lobby space. The Palm Valley Church is proposing to have services, three main church services on Sunday mornings and two services on Saturday evenings. Those are the services in which the majority of people would attend. And they would also be able to utilize the building for, you know, small group meetings throughout the week, and administrative offices for the church. The, in looking at the parking, the lot that the church is proposing to purchase would contain about 175 parking spaces. If you use our zoning ordinance to determine the amount of parking that would be required for this type of church of this size, it would require about 300 parking spaces. And so although the, the church would appear to be deficient in a, by about 150 parking spaces, there is a surplus of 100 parking spaces in this commercial center. And the, the properties in this center have a shared parking agreement that is recorded in the CCNRs for this commercial center. And however, although the majority of the businesses would be closed on Sunday mornings during the time that these additional parking spaces may be needed, in an effort to minimize any potential conflict with other tenants, staff is proposing that a stipulation be added for the church to obtain a written agreement to allow the use of existing off-site parking, and we've outlined that in stipulation number four. And the, the applicant has noted that they have been in discussions with the Room Store, which is just across, across the street here, and the Room Store has indicated that they would share 100 parking spaces with the church if needed, and the applicant is in the process of obtaining a more formal agreement for that shared parking. We have included a letter to that effect in, in the staff report. Staff does recognize that the Sunday morning church service would draw the most attendance, and we realize that that is, is the time when the businesses in the center primarily will be closed. If the church is operated as proposed, the peak demand for the church parking should accord during the hours when the parking demand for the other businesses is at its lowest. However, we have still added that stipulation, number four. We've also added stipulations five and six to ensure that if there is any excessive parking problems, traffic problems, that the Community Development Director will have the ability to work with the applicant to provide additional restrictions, or the city will have the ability to directly address any complaints that we might, that we might have. Wanted to quickly show you the building elevations. There will be only minor changes to the exterior of the building, and they primarily will be this area here and here, they currently are windows, and they would be filled in with stucco to match the rest of the building. Also, the other noteworthy change, this area here, in the back of the building, there is a dock area, and that would be closed in so that the church would be able to have additional space for, for offices and classrooms. There was a citizen review meeting held on November 10th, and no one attended that meeting. Staff has, however, received nine letters of support from the 12 adjacent business tenants and owners in the commercial center. We included six of those in your staff report. We received three more today. And that concludes the presentation by staff. Staff can answer any questions that you might have. We also have representatives from the church with us. We have Mr. Art Day, who also can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Brett. Questions of staff? Commissioner Peters? Commissioner Schlosser? Williams? Questions over here on this side? All right. Mr. Day, would you like to come up and make a presentation or answer questions or?
Yes, my name is Art.
For the record.
Art Day, with Palm Valley Church.
Okay.
I don't have a presentation as such, just want to be available to ask any questions that may come about, so.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? Any, any on this side? Questions of the applicant? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Public, would anybody from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing, and since I didn't hear any questions from the commission, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve. Motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, eyes hap. Aye, kay. It is a six-one vote. Mr., no, six.
Yo, nevermind, I forgot.
Luke Speck. And could you please, for the record, tell the clerk your objection?
I am sort of concerned with the increasing use of, of churches along the commercial space on Litchfield Road, and I think you'll find that this is consistent with a prior vote on another facility also on Litchfield across the street, having some concerns about, you know, taking away from potential commercial and retail opportunities for the city, as well as conflicts with parking and, and other traffic with, with folks getting to our existing commercial businesses. You know, obviously, I, I don't wanna, you know, it has nothing to do with, with you or anything, just, I don't find that it's, that's appropriate for, for the commercial center, and so I'm voting no.
Great, thank you very much. Any other comments? In that case, staff communications. Mr. Director.
Chairman, members of the commission, I distributed with your packet an ethics policy. The city council recently adopted an ethics policy, and you should have gotten one in your, your packet. And there was also an acknowledgement form that you have received the policy, and you've read it. Hopefully, you've had a chance to peruse it.
Is this a gift? I didn't read it, Harvey.
It's less than $50.
Oh, okay.
And I encourage you to read the ethics policy. There's also a requirement to sign that acknowledgement form and return it to the, to Joe. And there'll also be a requirement, if you read the manual, annual training in ethics, and the city attorney's office will probably be, will be arranging training for the commission, ethics training, so you'll be required to do ethics training. So if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer. Williams, you, you look like you didn't get, did you get the manual? Did you get a copy?
Yes, I did.
Okay. You look like you're, all right.
No, I was surprised Chairman Gilzer sounded, you know, holding up his orange bag, sounded like he didn't go through his entire package.
I was being sarcastic. Missed that.
We missed that sarcastic.
Oh, okay. Any, any other staff communications?
One other, one other item that Joe's gonna tell me about right now. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Terms on some of the planning commission members expires at the end of January, January 31st, and that is Sean, Leslie, Sherry, and Bob. I assume all of you would like to be reappointed, and I'll recommend your, recommend you for reappointment. That would, terms expire the end of January 31st, so that'd be for an additional three-year term, so everyone's eligible for reappointment.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recommends they be reappointed also.
That'll come up in December, probably. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else?
And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Same to you.
And on that note.
I move rejoining.
Wait, 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 wait. Do you guys wanna, would you like to brief us, or would you like to brief the rest of the commission on what transpired with the circulation and general plan amendment, just so they're up to speed? Because it'll have, it'll be finished before the next meeting. Briefly.
Chairman Gilzer, I'd be glad to, and, and hopefully, yes, it will be finished before the next meeting. At the city council public hearing, we presented the commission's recommendation with the, for adoption of the circulation plan with the two changes, one to the Queen Creek Road alignment and the other one to the Haciampa Freeway. With respect to the Queen Creek Road alignment, staff suggested the council consider the original recommendation on the basis that we felt that the roadway could still be accommodated on the site with the water and wastewater treatment facilities. And on the Haciampa Freeway, we essentially recommended the same, staying with the original alignment, pretty much on the same basis as Commissioner Schlosser had, that the line will probably move again some point before this is all done, and we felt that was still a better location. However, in the interim, the state land department suggested that we consider taking the, that alignment, and rather than curving it and bringing it back into the 303, that we consider taking it over at kind of a 90-degree angle into the 303, I think, in a manner that Commissioner Williams implied during the P&amp;Z hearing. So I made a contact with the other property owner who would be affected by that alignment, and they submitted a letter and appeared at the hearings supporting that realignment. So when it goes back to the council on the Haciampa, I believe we'll go with the alignment that brings the Haciampa into the 303 at a kind of a, more of a right angle intersection. And as far as the Queen Creek Road alignment goes, we're still working with the affected parties, trying to come to some resolution. The council had asked for additional information as to whether or not, an independent statement as to whether or not the roadway would, in fact, preclude the use of the property as, as a water and wastewater treatment facility. And then also if, what costs, additional cost, if any, would be a result of a redesign of the facility that had been done up to this point, if the road were placed in that location. So we're currently researching that information, but at the same time, working with the affected parties to see if there still isn't some middle ground that we can come up with, so. I believe it, I believe it will go back on December 7th, so if you're interested, you're crazy. No, you're interested, you could either attend the hearing or watch it on the internet.
All right. Hey, thank you very much there, Mr. Schmitz. I appreciate the update. I'm sure the rest of the commission does too. And on that note, the chair, does anybody have anything else to say? We are.